Good evening to you and to the people of Guam. Today is Tuesday, December 19th, 2023. This town hall will be conducted by myself, Senator William A. Parkinson, Chairman of the Committee on Fire, Agriculture, Power, and Energy Utilities, Public Transit, Unemployment Insurance, and Universal Health Insurance. This town hall is called to order, and the time is 5:39. For the record and to comply with the open government law, notice of this meeting was disseminated to all local media outlets on Tuesday, December 12th, 2023. And the second notice was also shared to all local media on Thursday, December 14th, 2023. Notice that this hearing was also posted and available on the Guam Legislature's website and the government of Guam Public Notice Portal. Topic for discussion. The purpose of this town hall is to give the public and the people of Tamooning the opportunity to file your damage claims on electrical appliances pursuant to Public Law 22-21. GPA customer service reps are joining me tonight to help you on how to file a damage claim for any household appliances broken or damaged because of power supply issues such as load shedding. I would like to welcome GPA tonight for joining us. And thanks you to the mayor of Tamooning and to the lovely village here for hosting us. We will now hear testimony and discussion, which I will start by giving my opening statement. Pursuant to Public Law 22-21 authored by my father, the late speaker Don Parkinson, sets the parameters of the appliance damage claim process with the Guam Power Authority when such damage is proximally caused by power surges, voltage fluctuations, or frequency fluctuations in the power supplied by GPA. My father wrote this law to be consumer-friendly, and I want to read this law in its entirety so people understand the program. Authority liable for damage. The authority shall be liable for damage caused to electrical appliances and devices when such damage is proximally caused by power surges, voltage fluctuations, or frequency fluctuations in the power supplied by the authority to a consumer and when such damage is not a result of any negligence on the part of the consumer and is not a result of an otherwise defective appliance or electrical device. Except for computer equipment or equipment for which the manufacturer recommends that a voltage protection device, surge protector, or power conditioning device be installed by the consumer, the authority may not require the use of voltage protection devices, surge protectors, or power conditioners, and may not raise the failure to use such devices as a defense to claims for damages arising out of voltage or frequency fluctuations or power surges. In establishing liability for damages pursuant to this section, the consumer need only prove that the appliance or electrical device was damaged by a variation of voltage or a variation of frequency or a surge in power supplied by the authority. The authority may raise in affirmative defense proof that the appliance or electrical device in question was defective or that the fluctuation of voltage or frequency power or power surge was not caused by the authority but was in fact caused by the consumer's electrical wiring system or devices or equipment belonging to the consumer. It shall be an affirmative defense for the authority to establish that the quality of power delivered to the consumer's meter was satisfactory. Any consumer claiming damages from the authority who relies upon the provision of this section must file such a claim with the authority within 90 days of the date of the alleged damage. Otherwise, except for the shortened period in which to make a claim, the procedures contained in the Government of Guam Claims Act shall apply to claims brought pursuant to this section to the extent not otherwise inconsistent herewith. This section shall be effective only as to damages occurring after the date that this section become law. In today's increasingly interconnected world, the reliability and consistency of our electrical grid are not just conveniences but necessities. Load shedding, while sometimes necessary to maintain grid stability, can have unintended and costly consequences for the taxpayers. The damage to appliances resulting from such power disruption can place a significant financial burden on households and businesses alike. In recognition of this, we firmly support the enforcement of a compensation program for ratepayers who suffer appliance damages due to load shedding. This program represents not only a fair and equitable approach to mitigating the adverse effects of power management strategies, but also reinforces the trust and relationship between power providers and consumers. By compensating ratepayers for such damages, utility companies can demonstrate their commitment to customer welfare and responsible service provision. This program is not just about financial recompense. It's about acknowledging the essential role that stable and reliable power play in our daily lives and the importance of protecting consumers from the unforeseen impacts of necessary grid management practices. It is a step towards a more resilient, consumer-focused approach to energy management, ensuring that the burdens of maintaining grid stability are not disproportionately borne by individual ratepayers. In the face of the challenges posed by load shedding, it is not only essential to address the direct impacts on consumers, particularly in terms of appliance damage, but also to ensure that the processes governing compensation are rooted in transparency and fairness. Transparency in this context means clear, accessible information about how to claim compensation, straightforward criteria for eligibility, and an open and accountable process for the assessment and reimbursement of claims. A transparent program fosters trust and confidence among consumers, demonstrating that utility providers and regulatory authorities are acting with integrity and in the best interest of the public. It also ensures that all effective parties are aware of their rights and the support available to them, thereby enhancing the overall effectiveness of the program. Furthermore, transparency is vital, ensuring that the program is administered equitably with all claims being treated consistently and fairly. It also provides a framework for accountability where ratepayers can seek redress if they feel their claims have not been handled properly. We believe that by committing to clear, fair, and open processes, GPA can significantly mitigate the adverse effects of load shedding on consumers and maintain a positive and trustful relationship with the public. To this end, I've requested records related to approvals and denials from GPA, which my office has now received. And public processes require public scrutiny, and we will follow your damage claims as they go through the process and ensure integrity and fairness. So with that, I'd like to welcome GPA and thank you for coming tonight. For those joining us, we have customer service reps here who are here to assist you with filing your damage claims forms. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to GPA for any statements or testimony they have.
Thank you, and good evening, everybody who's here. So Senator, first of all, thank you for arranging this. This is our fifth town hall meeting in, I think, the last three weeks, in over three weeks. My name is Tracy Lim Tiyako. I'm the Assistant General Manager for Administration at GPA. And I have here Mr. James Borha, who is our Customer Service Manager. I'm going to turn it over to James to discuss some frequently asked questions regarding the damage claim process.
Good evening, Senator. Thank you. I'll be going over the damage claims process and frequently asked questions. About damage claims, if you believe your electrical appliances and devices have been damaged as a result of power surges, voltage fluctuations, or frequency fluctuations in the power supplied by the Guam Power Authority, you can file a claim. The claim must be filed with the Guam Power Authority within 90 days of the alleged damage. If it is determined that the damage to your electrical appliances was caused by something within Guam Power Authority's control, you may be eligible to receive compensation. What is GPA's responsibility regarding a damage claim? We must determine how the incident happened, whether or not GPA caused it, the extent of your damages. We evaluate each claim based on the information you provide in our investigation, which involves reviewing the completed damage claim form, invoices, estimates, and receipts from a licensed technician, assessment of the damaged appliance, reviewing of trouble calls or logs and meter data for any power disruptions on the date and time of the alleged damage. Who is eligible for a claim? Any GPA customer who has suffered damages that they believe are a result of power surges, voltage fluctuations, or frequency fluctuations in the power supplied by GPA may file a claim. This includes residential, commercial, and industrial customers. All eligible claims will be awarded to the GPA account holder. What types of damages are eligible for a claim? Eligible claims must include damage caused to electrical appliances and devices when caused by power surges, voltage fluctuations, or frequency fluctuations in the power supplied by the authority. It is important to note that outages without associated fluctuations typically do not cause damage to electrical items. However, our team at GPA possesses tools to assess whether there were fluctuations in power to your home or business during the time of the incident. What types of damages are not eligible for a claim? Damages that occur due to acts of nature such as typhoons, floods, earthquakes, lightning, or animal and insect infestations. Any damage caused by an act of nature is beyond the reasonable control of the authority and is not eligible for a claim. How do I file a claim? To file a damage claim, you may visit our GPA website at guampowerauthority.com, and you may follow the link to "How Do I File a Claim?" Complete the damage claim form. Email the completed form with estimates and/or receipts to damagedclaims@gpagw.com, or visit any of the GPA locations and speak with a customer service representative. Is there a time limit for filing a damage claim? Yes, for your claim to be valid, it must be filed with GPA within 90 days of the incident that may have caused damage to your appliance or device. What information do I need to file a claim? You will need to provide your name, account number, service location, mailing address, contact information, list of appliances and/or equipment, the time and date of incident, and description of incident that occurred. What documentation is required when filing a damage claim? When filing a damage claim, it is crucial to provide supporting documentation, including photographs of the damage, estimates, or invoices for repairs. How long does it take to process a claim? At GPA, it is our policy to respond to claims promptly and fairly pursuant to Guam Public Law 22-21. However, the processing time for damage claims varies depending on the complexity of the case. You may be contacted for additional information if needed. To ensure an efficient claims process, we recommend you do the following. Provide all necessary and appropriate information regarding the claim. Promptly respond to GPA's requests for information or documentation. Retain copies of all invoices or estimates and/or receipts for repairs or parts replacement. Keep damaged appliance in storage until your claim has been resolved. What happens after I submit a damage claim? After submitting your damage claim, it will be reviewed by our Claims Committee. GPA's Claims Committee is comprised of members that include line electricians, technicians, power system dispatchers, and engineers who may require an inspection to validate your claim. You may be contacted for additional information if needed. The team reviews how the incident happened, whether or not it was caused by the electricity supplied by the authority, the extent of your damages. And once the review is complete, you will receive notification regarding the outcome of your claim. Will GPA pay for my new device or appliance? The Damage Claims Program covers the cost of repairs or the depreciated value of the appliance or device. Depreciation is calculated using the depreciation guide for personal property and building materials. Is there an appeals process if my claim is denied? GPA evaluates all claims fairly. If your claim is denied, we will explain the reason for the denial in a letter mailed to you. You also have the right to appeal within 90 days from letter notice to GPA's Utility Services Administrator. How can I contact GPA about my claim for further assistance? For additional assistance or inquiries related to your damage claim, visit our customer service centers for assistance or contact our call center at 671-647-5787. Our dedicated team is here to assist you throughout the claims process. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Senator, I also wanted to add that through the five town halls that we have participated in, GPA and yourself, we have received very good suggestions and comments from our ratepayers, from our customers. And I wanted to mention that because as GPA is actively reviewing and assessing its current process, we'd like to incorporate some of the comments and suggestions made by the folks who took the time to come to these town hall meetings. One of the improvements that we spoke about is prioritizing, for instance, damage claims to personal medical devices. So as you had mentioned in previous town hall meetings, the proliferation of medical devices used in our daily lives is more common than it had been 30 years ago when the law and the program was initially conceived. So we are looking at that as well as just overall process. Can we improve on the process? Can we improve on the ease of filing the claim? Can we improve on how the claims are submitted and how we communicate to our customers about the status of their claim? How customers can find the status? So we're looking at the process as a whole. So I wanted to let you know that. And then also, you had mentioned earlier damage claims and load shedding. So I wanted to... This is something that I felt to address before, but GPA is taking great strides to end load shedding, to mitigate the need or the risk of load shedding. Load shedding will... Once we get our Ukadu Power Plant online, which is scheduled for early 2026 or late 2025, that would greatly help the generation capacity. We are actively taking steps, for instance, through emergency procurement, through working with your office on Bill 201 and 206, to really gain that capacity in as quick a time as possible. So I wanted to make sure that we do address that. We had not addressed that in the prior four town hall meetings. So thank you.
Thank you for that. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor to anybody from the public if they have any questions or testimony or things they'd like to share with GPA or us. It's all right. Don't need to be shy. All right. So this is our fifth and final town hall. And first and foremost, I'd like to thank all the village mayors from Molesu, Jotnia, MTM, Tamooning, and Gigo for all participating in this process and giving us access to your village and your people. And thank you for that. I'd like to thank GPA for being a collaborator in this process and trying to foster goodwill between the ratepayers and the energy utilities. There's been a lot of testimony, and there have been a lot of things that have really surprised me about this process. So just kind of as a review of all of it, first and foremost is really just the complexity, the added complexity and proliferation of the medical devices and of the appliances themselves. You know, some of the processing power and some of these things could rival that of what we sent to space, and that's just in our fridge. So it makes it difficult, and that leads to problem number two is difficulty in people finding technicians who are rated appropriately, who can make the judgment calls on their devices. You know, sometimes it's going to be difficult to find somebody to make that assessment on a very sophisticated medical device, and that adds to the challenge. And I think that also leads to problem number three of where maybe there needs to be an adjustment to the 90-day period with the difficulties in finding technicians, finding documentation such as receipts or making models of air conditioners people might have thrown away a month ago. We might be considering looking at changing it by statute because I know this is set by law, so there's nothing GPA can do on their own. So maybe this is a conversation we have about extending statute as well as updating other provisions of this law. Because the other thing that came out is just that with so much of the passage of time, this is an old law. And sometimes old laws need to be updated with the times. And I think this is the one that has a lot of potential for that, to be streamlined for the processes today. And even though we're coming to the end of these town halls, I'd like to continue with this dialogue with GPA to further improve this process. And one of the biggest suggestions that came out of this was just the ease of filing the process. You know, how can we make this process easier? How can we make documentation easier? And most importantly, how can we track it? How can, after I file this, can I figure out without calling somebody how my thing is going? Is it being processed? Has it been judged? Has it been rejected? Is it in appeals? If I could go look that up, I think if anybody could just go look that up, I think that would go a long way towards making the process more convenient. I know GPA has taken strides towards digitizing and modernizing their processes. I give great credit to the Energy Rebate Program. That's a testament to moving on and updating with the times. And I encourage you to continue moving in that direction. I do like some of the action points that GPA has suggested in terms of prioritizing medical devices and improving the filing processes. But I guess my question to GPA is the two biggest things that people need to make their claims go well is an accurate make and model or the receipts of their appliances and the approximate time of their energy event that caused the damage. What are ways GPA can assist people in getting this information if they're having trouble finding it themselves? Like say, they think the date was sometime last week. Could you help them? What are ways they could help you? You could help them narrow that timeframe down?
Okay, that's a great question, Senator. And we have helped people narrow the time down. We do generally ask for a date, like a specific date and a timeframe. That helps us. But if somebody says, "You know, I know it was the first week of December." We can go back and pull the data from that meter, from their meter specifically, analyze that data. Also, as James had mentioned in previous testimony, his team also goes and speaks with our dispatchers to see if there were any trouble calls, any areas, any trouble calls, and any response to that person's area or their house or their feeder. And in a previous meeting, which of course I can't remember date and time, we did provide you with a copy of a sample, a sample completed claim, a successful claim. And I'm holding that here. And in this claim, what we include here is the analytics that our engineers use, grid analytics for meter data. And in this claim, for instance... Sorry, I can't really hold it up here. In this claim, for instance, the engineers did look at it and they analyzed it and said, yes, indeed, there was a fluctuation that may have caused damage to an appliance. And so in this case, the claim was approved. And so this highlights again, it underscores how important it is for the customers to try to identify date and time. Our customer service reps will help you. We can certainly log down any times of that. The meter data that is pulled is every 15 minutes. I do want to chat a little bit about the 90-day period, and that's something that James will discuss. When a customer comes in, what is that period of time that we consider the claim submitted?
So as long as the claim, the actual damage claim form is submitted within the 90 days, we do honor that. And we are flexible with the customer if they're pending any invoices or diagnosis from a technician because sometimes that does take time for them to receive it from their technician. I've helped some customers that have had that trouble trying to retrieve that document or the invoice or technician's diagnosis. But as long as it's in before the... Or by the 90 days, within the 90 days of the alleged damage, then of course, we can further work with the customer to get any pending documents.
That's very gracious of you folks. And I think the other thing that might require some legislation, but I think became kind of apparent through this process, is a lack of a preapproval process for certain more vulnerable groups, particularly in the Manamku and those who are reliant on medical devices. I myself, I'm open to the idea of maybe we have some sort of preapproval for a percentage of a damaged device of appliance of somebody who's potentially disabled or somebody who's a Manamku just so that they can get some immediate relief. And then the long and short of it, if their claim was legitimate, then all's well, ends well. GPA pays the other half. And if it turns out that GPA was not at fault, then maybe we could work out some sort of repayment or forgiveness. And but you know, I'm not going to lose any sleep over somebody getting immediate relief even if it wasn't GPA's fault. And so maybe that's something we could work on because I know with this process, even at the best of times, it's going to take like a month. And for somebody who is very reliant on a medical device, you know, forget about ordering in a whole new one. You still got to pay for that first before that process even starts. And to not even see any relief for a month under the best circumstances, that's very difficult. That's very difficult for some people on the fixed income to bear.
Senator, you're right. And I believe it was our Jotnia Town Hall meeting that we had a customer come in and talk about his medical device that he needed to use during the evening times every day. So James and I took that to heart, and we actually made a call to one of the mayors, MCOG, to see if there weren't any other types of senior programs or public health programs that might be out there that GPA could avail of directly to help the customer or to give the customers some references so that they could have immediate relief. So payment for the... Any partial payment or even full payment under the damage claim for, for instance, personal medical devices, as you and I had discussed, it doesn't quite get you the actual medical device. So we want to make sure that wherever we see a customer in need, if we could match any available services and give them references to that, I think that would go a longer way than just simply to improve maybe the... A pre-improvement, a payment pre-improvement or faster check writing process. How do we help that person immediately? That being said, GPA still needs and must maintain its transparency and accountability. So we will absolutely work with you to see how we can address these issues, especially for Manamku and medical devices. We need to make sure that the money that we approve out is accountable and is accounted for. So that is... That's that very important transparency that we need to not forget.
I understand and I appreciate that sentiment. And as we come to the end of the process here with these town halls, that doesn't mean for people that are out there watching that this process is over. mean for people that are out there watching that this process is over. This is a continual process of change and updating, and as long as I'm here, if you have continued help, you can contact my office or GPA, and they'll be here to assist you and at least point you in the right direction in any way we can. So again, as we're wrapping this up, oh, I gotta...
Sorry, I was just wondering, if a person is going through probate, and so their name is not as a ratepayer, can they still apply?
Yes, nothing prevents you from applying for any claim. If, if you're currently going through probate, of course, the court appoints the administrator. In some, in such cases where there was an administrator to the estate, any payouts that needed to be done were made out payable to the estate of the deceased.
Thank you for your question, ma'am. So again, I'd like to thank all the village mayors that have hosted us. I'd like to thank GPA. Just, and just to let you guys know what we've got on the horizon, the OPA has released a very frankly shocking report about use of credit cards within GPA and GWA. But as of right now, that is outside the scope of this town hall and these public hearings, but it will be something, we will be having an oversight hearing sometime in January. Yeah, but for now, just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year. Thank you for joining us on this process. And with that, that will be the end of these town hall meetings. If there are no further questions or comments, the Committee on Fire, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities, Public Transit, Unemployment Insurance, and Universal Health Insurance will continue to accept written testimony on tonight's meeting within five business days from tonight, which will be mailed to my office at 238 Archbishop Flores Street, Suite 905 of the DNA Building in Hagatnia. You may also send your written testimony to my office via email, senatorparkinson@guamlegislature.org. Thank you all for your participation. This town hall is adjourned. We have snacks and refreshments at the back. I think we have some delicious tiny sandwiches. Please help yourself. Merry Christmas, everybody, Happy New Year. The time is now six ten, and this town hall is adjourned. Thank you very much.